I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, pursuant to them, being at the South Jersey Times and the Sentinel were notified of this meeting, and it was also posted in the municipal building.
Mr. Leo is absent. Mr. Garofalo?
Here.
Mr. Gaetano is absent. Mr. De Cesare?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Here.
Mr. Felici is absent. Mr. Iglesias?
Here.
Mr. Gravener?
Here. Okay, in the absence of Mr. Gaetano and Mr. Leo, there are two alternates, Andy Hamel and Justin Felici. But Justin's not here?
No, Justin's not here. So Andy Hamel or Russell Wood.
Okay. Minutes in the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Motion by Dana, seconded by Richard Basio. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Extension.
Do you want to deal with anything else on the agenda first?
Well, I want to deal with the extension.
Oh, okay.
The Scotty Bowes extension.
I received a call from Mr. Gruccio. He said he has another meeting. He started at six, and he would get here as soon as he could. He would text me when he was on his way. So they're not here at this point.
And so we don't know if he's going to be here until later? Is that the idea? We have quite a full...
I don't have a time.
Yeah, we have a pretty full agenda tonight, so I wouldn't mind acting on that right now. Just administering...
No. You're welcome, David. It's your pleasure.
Yeah, so as long as the board is on board with that, we'll move on the extension. How long can we turn this?
Let me at least tell you what the request was. I must remember the Visconti application.
Right.
And there's been a couple of extensions on the zoning permit. They're now asking for two of their entitled three-year extensions, so they want two one-year extensions. I think with the previous correspondence we had on this, they had explained the process being very arduous regarding the cannabis approvals in New Jersey. So they are pursuing it diligently, they indicate. I know the township is on board with it as far as working with them, and that's the reason for the delay, not them just laying back and not doing what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, they're having a difficult time with the state, I know. Or everybody that's applying for those facilities.
But they're assuring us in writing that they're diligently pursuing it. They're hoping they do not need the two years. They're going to go with one year, or they figure they might as well go with the two one-year extensions if they need it. If they don't, then...
So they want us to give them two one-year extensions right now?
Correct.
Today? Oh, okay. I make a motion, we give them two one-year extensions. Second motion in a second.
Okay. Do they want to put what the end date is on that, Michael?
Let's see. So they're indicating that the first extension would go to February 5, '23, and the second one would go to February 5 of '24. I'm basing that on Mr. Gruccio's presentation.
So February of '24.
Correct.
Mr. Garofalo?
Yes.
Mr. De Cesare?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes.
Mr. Gravener?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, extension was granted, then. Mike, you wanted to talk about the closed session with us?
I wanted to give the board an update on the litigation that we had not talked about, which has been filed and we're involved with. I thought you should have an update on that. And I think the board had expressed another meeting that wanted to discuss with me what their rights were regarding the filming of meetings as well. Whenever you want to do that.
Should we do that right now? Let's make a motion, we go in the closed session. Motion by Dana De Cesare? Second. Second by Michael Polo, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Okay, so we're going to go into closed session for a brief time to discuss some litigation. Will we go in the...
I think it's easier if we go in there.
Okay, and move back.
I say thirty minutes.
What's that?
I say thirty minutes.
Okay. Let's go, Dan. I have a second. Are we back on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we need a motion to reopen the regular meeting. I make a motion to reopen. Second? Motion by Dana. Second by who was that?
This is me.
Is that Mike? Okay, we're going to move right to our regular agenda now. First on the agenda is ZB 2201, in the name of Andre and Michelle Tania, if I'm saying Tony.
You did a good job on that one.
What's that?
You did a good job on that one.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going over it with him myself to make sure I'd get it right. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jen Johnson. I'm from the law firm Cicillano and Associates, and I'm representing Andy and Michelle.
Andy? I'm going to swear you in, Andy, okay? You swear to tell truth about the testimony you're about to give?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Andre Tania, 786 Stanton Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are here this evening for, as Mr. Tania said, 786 Stanton Avenue. We're looking, we're seeking two variance approvals for minimum lot size and minimum lot frontage on the street. In the RA district where this house is located, the minimum lot area is 1.5 acres, and the Tania's lot is one acre, and minimum street frontage is 150 feet, and the property has a frontage of 135 feet on Stanton Avenue. Now, these two things are obviously pre-existing non-conforming conditions that have been there well before the Tanyas owned the property. The house has been sitting there. The lots are one-acre lots that were subdivided some time ago in a line down from one another. So because of this, we cannot remedy this nonconformity, because if we took land from a neighbor, that would make that, that lot's nonconforming, and it just would domino down. So it is what it is. But we're not looking to obviously change the lot size or the lot frontage. We're just looking to put a modest addition on the side of the house that's existing. So if I can... Oh, you already swore him in. So can I just ask you to give a little bit of background on the project?
The project, we're, it's currently, it's a single rancher.
Weather?
No.
Yeah. Oh, really? I thought you didn't like ranchers or something.
So we're trying to extend the home. We're keeping the bathroom, two-bathroom home, a single kitchen. All we're doing is extending it to add more square footage to the home.
It's a three-bedroom house now?
Three-bedroom, and it will remain a three-bedroom.
It will remain a three-bedroom. How long have you owned the house?
Since 2001, I think.
And the lot size was always that lot size?
Yes.
You don't know when it was subdivided? Do you know when it was subdivided?
Oh, no. No, it was bought that way.
Okay.
When we bought the lot, when we bought the house, the, all the lots, back then, was, requirement was one-acre lots, minimum, to build a residential home. And in the process of me applying to do this, I didn't realize that the audiences had changed at the town.
What, all you're asking for is you need street frontage, which is already a house there.
Yes.
Correct.
You're going to add on to your house?
Yes.
Okay. And you need to have it bigger than a half now.
Yes.
How long's this house been there on one acre?
A long time.
So, yeah.
Twenty-five, thirty?
We moved in in 1995, and the house was already there.
Right, so...
We're going, we're putting two bedrooms upstairs, yes.
We're extending it up to eight, twelve feet to the left of the house.
Well, you, the side yard is fine.
We have, we got plenty...
Plenty of rooms on side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks and all that. And it will definitely promote a more desirable visual environment. Mr. Tania says it's the ugly duckling on the street, so that, the benefit of granting these variances will substantially weigh any... There is no detriment, because it is what it is. We're not making it any worse. It is just what it is.
Existing nonconforming use?
Correct.
I didn't ask you, Mike, has everything...
Notice, yes, yes. And it is basically akin to an expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming use in a sense, because the lot's staying the same, but the use is getting bigger, and it's not a lot that's too small, so it's similar to that type of application.
Ed, do you have any comments? I know you wrote some, but...
So I'll touch on the engineering comments, and then I'll have Julia comment on anything planning related. One of the comments that we had was to have testimony to be provided to confirm that there's no additional impervious that will be added, other than what's shown on the survey that was provided. It appears there's a driveway that extends all the way back to a metal garage in the back. And then our second comment was regarding, it appears that the yard in a certain location is used as a second access, maybe to get to the back. So we were just curious to have some testimony provided for both of those instances.
Yeah, what you see on the left side of the property, I just had the driveway resurfaced, so it looks like the tire tracks. That's when I had the, I had topsoil dumped, so rather than driving on the driveway, I hadn't driven on the side of the house, because it was all ruined from the equipment driving up and down.
Understood.
So no, no, there is no second driveway that ever has been, and it's not anticipated to be. It's just driving on grass. That isn't good grass right now, you said, right?
No, no. What happened is because of the winter, you know, the grass hasn't, as soon as we concede it, it'll grow, and it'll be grass.
And then in regards to the additional impervious areas?
There'll be nothing added.
Is there any comments?
Just one. Could you just clarify that the home office is just going to be that in home office? It's not going to be a new business with new traffic coming and going on a daily basis?
No, no, it's a residence. No.
That's...
No, no, no business.
I just want to reiterate, is all, you're going to maintain the same number of bedrooms?
Yes.
No extra bathroom, like it is?
No, two bathrooms.
Okay. Okay, the environmental community has no comments, so is there a motion to open up to the public?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dana De Cesare? Second. Second by Michael Polo, all in favor? Is anyone here likely to be heard regarding, regarding ZB 2201?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Ralph Travoloni, vice chair of the planning board.
Right hand, please. You swear to tell truth about the testimony you're about to give.
I do.
Name and address from the record.
All right. Ralph Travoloni, 802 Marshall Mill Road. Okay, back in 2004, when we revisited the master plan, back in the day, we had one-acre lots with 135-foot frontages in the RA area. It was changed to 2.5 on a major and 1.5 on a minor. And it was everyone who lived here at the time's impression that if anybody was going to add something on to their house, I hate to use the word grandfather, but it would be pre-existing conditions or grandfather. Therefore, I think it's a sham that these people had to come here tonight, because it should have been just a slam dunk done.
Well, evidently, it's not in our ordinance, correct? Any grandfather?
We were told, now, you've lived here as long as I have, every single home that was an existing lot...
Should be.
And an existing frontage would qualify if you had to add on a 10-by-10 addition or whatever. And here today, you're telling us that it's not true, and you lied to us.
Us.
To the people.
Not us.
I know you do, Rich.
Not us.
So will any of the people who've been on the board from here down comment on my comments?
Well, it makes sense. I made a comment. It makes a lot of sense.
So why are we here tonight?
Well, we don't control any of the, any of the master planning and any of that.
Therefore, we should introduce an ordinance to fix this situation so it doesn't happen again.
You need to make that speech to the council committee.
I will.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? I make a motion, we close the public. Second by Michael Polo, all in favor? Aye. I make a motion to approve ZB 2201. I second the motion. Motion by Dana De Cesare, second by Andy Hamel.
Mr. Garofalo?
Yes.
Mr. De Cesare?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes.
Mr.?
Wait a minute.
I've seen one about it.
I got to add on to what Ralph said. You're right. We've kind of put people on the spot, because you don't get a, come up here for variance for nothing, plus, they can be young, so, for that, I'm saying, that's motion.
I'm very reasonable. [laughing]
You wouldn't be making any money.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, yes, Mr. Gravener?
Okay. Both, yeah.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is ZB 2202, in the name of Paul Esposito. Mike, everything in order?
Yes.
How are you?
Please, raise your hand, you swear to tell truth about the testimony you're about to give.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Paul Esposito, 1477 Willow Grove Road, Monroeville. I have a couple handouts addressing the points that were made in the memo from CMA, if you guys want these.
Sure. Any response to their...
Yeah, it's just some points.
Some of the best part is there's a copy of their letter?
It's a copy with just some of the points that were raised that I guess we're going to discuss, and just my responses to them.
Just do just three of them?
Yeah. I didn't know how many people would be here.
I'm doing three, so I'll just... I want to do...
The first point on the application was in regards to impervious coverage. I didn't cover that in the application.
What do you want to do?
Put a garage on my land.
And you already have a garage?
At my existing residence, I do. We're building a new home, and we're looking to put a detached garage that doesn't meet the zoning ordinance.
The house that you, on this piece of property, is there a house or a garage?
It's currently under construction, the house.
And you, while it's under construction, you want to build another garage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We're looking to add a 32-by-42 garage. And currently in the home I live in, I have a 32-42 garage. So it's really, I'm going to be moving and trying to get the same garage I have. So the lot is, it's 13.65 acres, so it's plenty big. The setback is about a quarter mile off the road, so nobody can actually see any of this. And we're just looking to match the look and aesthetics of the home, have a nice garage there. I have plenty of hobbies and toys to put in the garage. Currently, the garage that I have, that's the same size, is full. So rather than having all my stuff out on the yard, just looking to keep it in a nice dry location.
Let's go over this again in a second. You're building a new house?
Yep.
Does that mean you're taking an old house down, or is this a whole...
No, separate property. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As usual, oh, there it is. I got it. So this is the garage.
Yeah, the last page of what I gave you is just to show you what I have today. It's where I live today. You'll see like a picture of the aerial of the, of the property.
So, Ed, any comments?
Yeah, I'm digesting what was provided.
I don't think the runoff's going to bother anybody on all that acres.
No, no, I, so, let's get to my comments. So the grading plan, I understand you provided, I don't believe it was in the pack, and I think you had an eight and a half by 11 within the application.
Here's the, the actual stamp, if you want.
That's a sole erosion plan by Gregory Simmons Engineering, correct?
Yeah.
That's separate from the township requirement for a grading plan that is going to be required for the garage, and should be designed in conjunction with the grading plan we're required for the post-welling.
The, yeah, I mean, I'm novice to this, so maybe you can educate me. This drawing that I have has the garage on it, and it has the house on it with like the elevations.
Yeah, so you may already have grading on the sole erosion plan?
Yeah.
Which, in that case, you would just have to most likely be updated and submitted to the township for review and comment.
Okay. I think you guys have it, but maybe not like as part of this application.
Not that I'm aware. Rosemary would care to comment?
I do not know.
I mean, for a deceptive, he needs a grading plan, correct?
Yes and no.
So he'll have one.
Yes and no. So, yeah, he theoretically should have one.
Yeah, I have one here with that garage.
Whether or not it has...
Have anything additional?
So...
Yeah, but like when I did this whole plan, I didn't know the garage didn't conform. So it was part of like the whole plan of the site.
And then in regards to our other comment with the utilities, the, the utility comment is addressed, I guess the only other question that's still outstanding is the type of foundation that'll be utilized.
The plan's a pole barn at this point, I think, just due to costs. I don't plan to put in like a permanent foundation. It's just going to drive the cost...
Talking about slab?
Yeah, pole barn with a slab. And I'm going to run out 100 amps to there with, with gas. I do plan to radiant heat the garage floor.
And what's the pole barn going to be used for? Is it any commercial use or anything?
No, just general storage. I have a ton of hobbies, my wife can tell you. Lot of cars, cars, ATVs, wood shop, metal shop, boats, you name it, I'm into it, so I need a lot of storage.
We'll, we'll, is it going to be plumbing in there, or...
No, just the gas for, for the radiant heat.
Bathroom's ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Julia has a few comments.
Just a, just a couple of questions. What is the need to exceed the minimum requirements, that we can't leave them?
It's just to, pretty much, today I filled the garage that I have, and it's the same size, and my wife parks her car outside. She wants to park it inside, so the attached garage to the house that we're building, she'd like to park, and I have a finished like showroom condition Volkswagen that I want to put in there, and we don't want to like have any tools running in that garage. So the detached garage would be like my workshop. If I'm doing woodwork, grinding, you know, stops flying, it's not going over my finished car in her car. So we kind of have a need for like two distinct spaces. One's I can't go in really, which is park the cars. The other one's my workshop.
And the permitted maximum building height is 15 feet, and you're going 10 feet over that to 25 feet?
Yeah, it's basically to match the aesthetics of the house. I really want the garage to like look like the house. It's part of the overall plan.
So I was just looking at this document. Is this what it's intended to look at?
That one's 25 feet high, and it matches.
This is like living quarters above it?
It's empty right now, yeah.
Okay, I just...
Yeah, that was part of, actually was here, same exact situation, eight years ago.
All right. I was just saying, here's a year planning on having living quarters above it.
Well, yeah, there's no living quarters. I'm actually, I'm moving.
They're just an aesthetic. I mean, I don't know about your project typically. What about cones will be up there?
Yeah, there's flies up there now, and I store wood up there.
That's all I have.
Yeah, the new one's just going to be like truss. I don't actually need that. I've found I don't need that storage up in the upstairs, and it's kind of a pain to walk up the steps, so I'm just going to have a truss design and just only utilize the bottom.
All right, Mike, do you have any comments?
Just, this what you submitted, I'm going to mark it as A1 in evidence. I'm assuming this is your testimony in response, considering your testimony in response to the engineer report?
Yes.
So why don't we open up to the public? I make a motion, we open the public. Second by Dana De Cesare, second by Michael Polo, all in favor? Aye, I oppose. Anybody in the public like to be heard regarding this?
Thank you. Ralph Travoloni?
Here, please. Here, please, for...
Okay. Two meetings ago at the planning board, our new zoning officer spoke about the flood plan, plane, the new ordinance that the town wants to pass, and she made a comment that if it was an acre lot, it wouldn't be subject and it would be waived. And I'm hearing a conflict again tonight and wondering, which is it?
So that's not what I said. What I said was we would take each case, case by case, but if it was a certain amount of acreage, then it would be with the consent of the engineer that it could be waived. That's what I said.
Okay. And once again, I'll speak on behalf of the applicant. You're running everybody into the ground here. I just think it's overkill for a larger lot.
We're not really adding one into the ground here.
Okay.
We're listening and trying to do the right thing for the...
I understand, but again...
We didn't make them come here.
That ordinance isn't in effect yet, correct?
No, the stormwater manager is.
Okay, and that's the new regs, the stormwater management?
No, that's the existing regulations that are included.
Okay. As far as the building size, I understand we have an ordinance for up to 1,200 square feet for additional storage, correct?
That's for...
Project, right?
You're allowed 1,200.
Correct.
And the applicant's is 1,280? Or he already has a garage.
Okay, so it's an addition? Okay.
So this is additional garage you sold.
Okay. I didn't hear that he already had it, I'm sorry. So as far as our engineers concerned and the flood plain, again, unless it's a hilly area, I don't see any reason for the flood plain to be investigated on, on a small addition.
There's no flood plain being investigated. It's to, so the ordinance with, you know, within the township and set forth by the state is ultimately ensuring that the additional runoff that is generated is recaptured. Now, as Rosemary said, it's a case-by-case basis. Really depends on, you know, the topography and the terrain that's, you know, currently there, and what's proposed to, you know, be set forth.
In this particular application, you have looked at the plans?
We haven't had anything submitted to review for the storm...
Oh, okay, I thought he, okay.
No, 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 no. That's, that's a request that, that is, you know, to be provided for review by the township.
It's also possible that this board could waive that this evening, correct?
Yes, but it is recommended...
It's within the board's power?
Yes, but it is recommended that it be provided.
Okay.
Because there hasn't been one, from my understanding, provided for the, for dwelling either.
Thank you.
You bring up a good point, can you review what I have and make sure it's okay?
Anyone else like to be heard regarding this in the public? I make a motion.
I can't review right now.
Seconded, voted on by Mike, all in favor? Aye, opposed, extensions.
Do I owe you guys something after this?
I don't, if you'd like to, you're welcome to add something.
No, I mean the flood, the, the.
It's our recommendation to the board that a grading grant plan be provided to the township for review, so you would, I believe, go through, Rosemary, am I correct, it goes through you?
Yes.
So, we submit to Rosemary, out of township.
The, the object is, you can't flood anybody else, any other people's property.
That makes sense.
That's the bottom line, I think, you don't want your water going on someone else's property.
That makes sense.
But I don't see that being a problem with all the acres you have, so.
Yeah, it's very far from everyone. Thank you.
You heard the testimony, Mike, do you have more comments? Rosemary, do you have anything else to say?
No, absolutely none.
Nothing else, no.
I make a motion, we approve the E32, motion by Dan DeSesary. Seconded. Seconded by Richard Glacius, because I might. The only thing, we gotta be careful, like make sure that he understands not for commercial use and, and that, anything of that nature. That was part of his testimony.
And there's no, no loft, no occupancy of the upper part.
Mr. Gravlo?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. DeSesary?
Yeah.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Glacius?
Yes. Yes, yes, I'm not finating.
Mr. Grebner?
Yes.
Are there any conditions attached to this?
No, there are no conditions, the, the condition was, it's not for commercial use, not to use the.
No loft occupancy.
The second floor for a, an apartment or anything?
Were you asking for guidance on the?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess the question he's asking is whether the motion included the recommendation that there be a grading plan?
Didn't the applicant state he had a grading plan, did I mis, did I misinterpret that?
I do, I'll, I'll submit it and I guess you guys can review, make sure it's good, I don't know, I, I, I gave it with, just via email, it didn't come in with the original application, I had a PDF of it, but I, I do have the original stamped, it's.
Okay, so he has a grading plan?
I think it's a grading plan, I'm not a professional, I don't know if this thing's a grading plan, i- it's got elevations, it's got all the buildings on it, it's.
Right, then it's a grading plan.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, next on the agenda, CB twenty-two dash oh three, Brian and Melissa Crawford. That's it, you're done.
Hi.
Raise right, right hand, please, sort of tell the truth about the testimony you're about to give.
Yes, sir.
Name and address from the record?
Brian Crawford, one oh one, Holly Court, Malika Hill.
Melissa Crawford, one oh one, Holly Court, Malika Hill.
Mike, everything in order?
Possibly, we have, I, this application was a little bit unclear to us, and I had a discussion with our engineer and our planner, a couple of discussions to try to resolve what our questions were, and I guess I'm the spokesperson as far as what we came, came down to with this, it's somewhat confusing because we have a request for building a house on lot twenty-two with one hundred feet of frontage, but the house is proposed on lot twenty-three, which has a private lane, it seems like it's fronting on the private lane, so I'm not sure that the notice should be for what it's for, or it should be for constructing a home on, on, not on an improved township roadway.
Can we, can we even, on a private driveway?
Well, so there's two quite, there's two recommendations we've, we've come up with, that, you know, one, the engineer would like to see a more detailed plan, in other words, showing where the other houses are, what the, what is the width of the paving, where the road ends, because it appears that the road goes, this private drive goes a certain distance, and then it's just woods, and also that there be some indication of what the actual plan is, you have to do here, because you have three, it seems like they have three lots, two of them involved in this application, so if they were, if they were going with lot twenty-two with a hundred feet of frontage, they should combine lots twenty-two with twenty-three, but they don't seem to be proposing to combine them, if they do, they're gonna be combining over top of Hollywood, Hollywood Lane, so we felt we needed a title report to be able to see the status of this private drive, because we don't know really what the legality of it is, is it, you know, who owns it, who maintains it, so forth, they'd like to see that in writing, and also that the engineer would like to see a more detailed plan as far as what's there and exactly what's being proposed.
So we're only asking for frontage, it's, it's a non-conforming lot right now, we're combining twenty-two and twenty-three, we're gonna deed those together, so it becomes one lot at that point, and it has a hundred feet of frontage today, and we're asking for a variance to be allowed to use that as a driveway to enter back to a single family home, that's it.
But that's not what you, you asked for in, in the original, is that what you advertised for?
Yeah.
He didn't say anything about combining the lots, that was what was confusing.
And what happens with the, the, the private drive, if you combine it, you're gonna eliminate part of it?
Chairman, if I may, because I researched that with the township solicitor and the town, and the county assessor, and that is owned, that private driveway is actually owned by the current owner, that he's buying the property off of, they're gonna do a deed of correction when they consolidate the lots.
So it's just an easement right now?
Yeah.
The private drive is an easement, which will remain untouched?
We're not gonna use that.
So the private drive goes to, I think, two houses now?
Mm-hmm.
And.
Correct.
I guess that is our head.
Yeah.
What lots are you on? It's so small, you can't say.
I know, so it's a tax map rather than.
So what, what, what lots are the two houses on?
I think going in on the left side, there's two houses on.
There is, they're not touching the property that we're purchasing.
So what's your driveway gonna be, Hollywood Lane?
No, we're gonna put a separate driveway in next to that.
We're gonna leave Hollywood Lane for the two houses, and we're proposing to take the sliver and make our driveway going back into the woods where we're putting our single family home.
The two houses, lot twenty-four and twenty-five, there's houses there?
Lot twenty-four and twenty-five.
Where are the, where are the houses on this private drive?
They're, they're off of Hollywood Lane, which is the easement that we would have after we.
Which lots are, are the?
Do you have this drawing?
Yes.
I do.
Do me a favor, can you please show?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Show, draw, draw, if you've got ten.
So, I can show you right here, these are the two homes that he's talking about, they're called out right here.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Correct, this right here is the frontage, the hundred foot frontage. This is one of the lots that we're purchasing, this is where we're proposing to put the, the single family home, this is the second lot, and we're also purchasing this back here, but these are the two lots that are in question right now, and we're only asking for frontage right here to put a driveway in.
Now, what are you gonna do? Lot ten?
Leave it vacant, we're gonna eventually farm this.
You're buying ten, all three lots?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, so none of this was clear, if I understand, all we have is a tax map, but so you're, you're buying all three lots, you're combining all three?
We're only combining the two, we're leaving the one in the, I think it's lot ten, will be separate, but that's gonna remain vacant, and we're gonna farm that eventually, a little bit.
Now, will that be landlocked then, once you do that? Is that access, there's no access?
It will be landlocked, but it, it will be all our property.
Wouldn't they, would it consolidate that, too? What do you think?
I mean, I don't, I don't have a response to that, I, I, I don't think Julia does either, but I'll let her speak for herself, but yes, theoretically it'd be landlocked, it appears.
Unless they extend their access driveway back to lot ten in the future, so therefore, you know, if it, they own all three lots, in the future they could extend their driveway that they're putting in on lot twenty-two further to lot ten.
Why don't you combine all three lots together?
We could definitely do that, we were only told that we had to deed the two together to have the frontage that we needed, that was just a little.
Well, that would landlock ten, then?
We didn't know that landlocking ten was an issue, because it's, it's all owned by us.
Yeah, we're, we're not selling it, we're never gonna put another house on it, we wanna farm it eventually.
And they have all the access they want, really, right there.
Yeah, if you look, if you look at it, we have over a thousand feet of access from our property, I'm sorry, not a thousand feet, my mistake, we have about six hundred and fifty feet of access from our existing property that we would own if we are approved with the frontage variance today.
So, let me clarify again, so twenty, lot twenty-four, so from the rear lot line of twenty-four on, you're gonna eliminate Hollywood Lane?
No, we're gonna keep it.
No, no, no.
That's what the houses are gonna be.
No, no, he, he's asking, there is no Hollywood Lane there right now, it's only woods.
Woods, right.
Right, so that doesn't exist past maybe fifty feet or so in, maybe a hundred feet in from lot twenty-four, do you, can I show you on that?
Yeah.
So, okay, so these are the two houses, Hollywood Lane ends approximately right there, the rest of it is just wooded property.
Right, so where's your driveway going to be?
So, we're gonna, we're gonna put the driveway in right here.
Okay, so you're not using Hollywood Lane at all?
We're gonna leave it for the people.
Everyone I'm asking is here, so that from here on, you're gonna eliminate Hollywood Lane, because this is gonna be combined.
Well, it's, it's only wood, it's not the.
I think, or they're saying you're gonna do a deed of correction, but do a way with Hollywood Lane?
Yes, that's correct.
At your surest own.
Yep.
No, that's a private drive, Hollywood Lane's somewhere else.
Now you see why it was confusing.
Yeah, no problem, no, that's why we're here, we're just, we're hoping to get approval tonight and.
Where's Hollywood Lane?
You know Little Mill Road, from Delsey Drive, go down Little Mill Road toward Al Township, and it's on your right, there's a little sign that says.
And that's, that's a township street in Hollywood?
No.
No, it's a variance dri, it's a driveway essentially.
No, no, they're talking about another road, there is another road drive.
Is Hollywood Lane part of your property though?
It's a private lane.
I'm confused, sir, can you, can you repeat the question?
Is, is, what's, what's this here, what's, is that it here?
Is that Hollywood?
Yeah.
Find it, find it.
What, what's the name of the?
Lane.
The, the driveway, Hollywood Lane?
Hollywood Lane.
Hollywood, yes.
That's it right there.
The private drive is called Hollywood Lane?
Positively, that's.
Township sign.
Township sign.
It's a road.
Is it worth working the driveway in there? It's been there since nineteen, since I was, nineteen seventy-seven, completely untouched. Sort of clear as your mug.
With a yes today, it'll be crystal clear.
So I think the question you have is, do you feel an approval with conditions to clarify all this, or you wanna see the clarification before you make a decision?
I, I, I made my piece about it, I would say, I, I think I'd like to clarify a little better, better drawn so we can understand exactly, we give this to somebody, they're gonna laugh at it.
Yeah, I, I think we need some more clarity.
We're, we're only asking for approval on the frontage today, not the, the improvement or buildings.
We're, we're trying to purchase the property, and we can't go to settlement until we know that we're able to put a driveway in with, with only having a hundred feet and a hundred and fifty.
So we can better understand what's going on, we, first of all, it's very difficult to read, it's so small, you can't even read the, the, the name of the road that's there.
And that's the proposed house on there, right?
Correct.
So you're proposing a house on?
A single family home, yes.
Yeah, just a single family, and, and we have twenty-six acres.
We should have put in that proposed driveway, so we could see it, because I can't see any, even, even if you buy the property, is, is the, they're gonna allow the sale go, going like that without a drive?
Well, it would be up to us to make the improvement for the driveway, we just wanna put a gravel driveway back to a single family home, there's a hundred feet of frontage right there, the, the driveway would be approximately thirty feet wide maximum, and it would leave Hollywood Lane untouched. So what, what we're asking for today is just approval on the frontage, nothing more, just so that we could go to settlement, purchase the land, we'll come back and get any of the required permits that, that are needed.
After you leave here, you're, and if you were to get approval here, you're okay to do whatever you wanted to, build your house, loans that meets all the, the requirements in the construction.
So with the, with the hundred foot of frontage, if, you know, it's, it is non-conforming today, when the lot was built, I believe that that was conforming in the seventies, I think is when it was subdivided, and if we look at the other properties that are surrounding, there's another lot right next to it, lot twenty-one, which already has a hundred foot of frontage, and several of the other lots to the left also are non-conforming, some of them as little as a hundred feet.
No, they're mostly all non-conforming there today, yeah, they were fine years ago.
So we're only asking for the frontage variance today, that is it, nothing more.
I think they understand that, but they're just, in other words, to give it approval to make sense, they wanna make sure that it's on the lane issue taken care of, you're consolidating lots and eliminating that, because right now it looks like you're fronting on Hollywood Lane on this, if you have like a surveyor, I assume you're gonna have to get a surveyor.
Well, the, the surveyor's coming out on Saturday, but we're supposed to go to settlement on the eighteenth, and, you know, we'll give you our commitment now that we will do everything that's required to have that, that deeded together with a deed of correction, if you give us the approval today, and you, you can make a contingent upon that, we just wanna make sure that we can go to settlement and start the process moving forward.
But are you comfortable with it, Mike, and Ed, are you comfortable with that?
I mean.
What direction do you, would you like it to shift out?
I'll defer to Mike on the legality of it, but in terms of what has been testified in regards to where the driveway location is, I have an understanding of it, I'm, I'm not sure if the board has an understanding, it would have been beneficial to have a driveway location depicted on the sketch, but beyond that, the variance is what they're, they're seeking, from my understanding.
Can we do that, Michael, we were just discussing?
Well, you could say either, do you wanna do a contingent upon getting, you know, deeds of consolidation and proof that Hollywood Lane is owned and is gonna be combined and so forth, or do you wanna see it first, that's really, within your discretion.
I mean, I hate to hold these people up by, by a piece of property over something that may be found fairly simple, but it's also not our fault that this is, like I said, clear as your mug.
Man, I have a good picture of it now, I mean, you're gonna combine the two lots?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have plenty of acreage, all you need is the frontage, that's the only thing you're asking for.
That's it, yes, sir.
All right, well, you, you're testing down, you know.
No, I make a motion, open the public. Seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Anybody from the public like to be heard regarding this matter?
Hi. They approved it.
You gotta give them the mic, folks?
Okay. My name's Dale Riggs, I'm the real estate agent representing the sellers of the property, and again, it is pretty simple, if they weren't even involved with the other parcels of lot twenty-three, it's a standalone lot of four and a half acres, similar to the first applicant, it's got a hundred foot frontage, he can't get any from the left, he can't get any from the right.
Do we need your phone?
Pardon me?
Do we need your phone?
I'm looking at the lot size, make sure I get my facts right, from the tax map. Oh, you wanna say it's just a phone with a tax map?
Can you continue, please?
Yeah, anyway, that's my comment on the thing, and if they're willing to clear up the issue as, as far as the easement, if it makes the board better that they're combining the both lots, they're not building on anything else, and combined they would have twenty-six acres of ground for one house.
Yeah, I think they need that cleared.
Okay, so that's my point.
Anyone else like to be heard?
Yeah.
Please go forward. Right hand, please, sort of tell the truth about the testimony you're about to give.
That is correct, yes.
Name and address, please.
Melissa, last name's Whittle, eleven eighty-six Sweetsboro Road, so basically, we wanna know with the road, it's a paper road that goes all the way through to Cedar Bridge, not only that, but your acreage leads to all three of our properties.
First of all, could you please speak?
Oh, yeah, so, our concern is.
Speak to us.
Our concern is, is that him and buying the property, are we now the reason of all of us having our property to basically have the woods, are we all gonna be looking into his backyard?
Where is your property?
I'm eleven eighty-six, my parents are eleven eighty, Nikki's eleven.
Eleven eighty-six, what?
Sweetsboro Road, we were all served with the paperwork from you guys.
We're not taking any of the woods down, we're, we're clearing a one acre lot in the middle of the five acre lot up front, nobody will see our house at all.
Yeah.
We don't wanna destroy that at all, we wanna leave it the way that it is.
And we wanna farm, we wanna farm as well.
What about the road, that goes all, it's a paper road that goes from Hollywood Lane, goes from Hollywood Lane all the way out through Cedar Bridge, is what you guys are looking at for Hollywood?
We don't have any, so there's a paper street, it's a private.
It's a private road.
But it leads out to Cedar Bridge.
Stops at lot ten.
It's, it stops.
It's up to ten.
Okay.
Thousand sixty-one feet.
Okay.
It ends.
Is it, we can't have testimony before the audience is sometimes.
Okay, no, 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 I'm just looking. Okay, no, 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 I'm just looking-
There's still a paper street there.
So you're saying it goes through lot 10 all the way back?
It's a private road.
But, is there a Hollywood Lane sign in Elk Township?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a Hollywood Lane in Elk Township, it comes in off of Cedar Bridge, and there's also property on that part of Hollywood Lane that's Franklin Township.
Well, that's Hollywood Ave.
It's, it's a different street altogether, we're confusing two roads together.
Hollywood Road.
I think the biggest clarification is, is like, making sure that all of our woods that we have and the acreage that we have on all of our properties is not taken down, and now basically seen directly into your, like, that's, that's the clarification that we all need as homeowners.
Yeah, we're not going to touch any of that.
We, we want the woods, that's why we picked something that's totally wooded, we don't want to take it down.
They cannot cut trees on your property.
No, 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 they're, they're not cutting off of our property, I'm glad that somebody's actually getting the property and doing something with it, but for clarification for all of us that own the property that have been there for so many years, and it's been acreage, we don't want somebody else coming in and knocking everything down and now directly looking into what could be their bathroom, their bedroom, from our acreage. That's what we're-
Let's be straight, if it's their property, and if it were your property, you surely would want to do what you would want, even if it was not-
Yeah, that, I just want clarification on what we're going to be seeing and getting once the property is now brought, because originally, somebody brought the property and was going to build houses back there for low-income families that didn't go through.
We, we don't want to do that, we just want one house.
It's been in the owner's name before.
It's been in the owner's name, 1977.
Yeah, that's fine.
We never had anything-
I'm sorry, okay.
And that's fine, but I, we were all served with letters to say what we needed to know
or what was going to be done, so that's why we're all here, just making sure.
Right.
Like, otherwise, it wouldn't have been an issue, we would have never got paperwork to even show up here if it wasn't going to be a question in what was going on.
You're within 200 feet of their property, they'll be notified.
Yeah.
And I think they answered your question.
Yeah, that's good, no, that's fine, I'm absolutely fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Nice to meet you.
I think the question comes up because they say they're going to farm it, so that means, sounds like you're going to clear it and farm it.
Some, some part.
Just, just a couple acres.
We're also doing the forestry program, so we, we want to keep the trees, that's what we, that, we went to an agricultural meeting, asked a bunch of questions, if we, we want to keep the trees, but we also want to farm, and that's a way to do it.
Okay, we've got some more, Ed. Raise your hand, please, swear to tell truth about the testimony you're about to give.
I do.
Name and address for the record.
1152 Sweetsboro Road, Warren Zinger. My concern is, he just stood here and said he's not going to take any woods down, that we won't be able to see his house or anything from the, from our property.
Right.
But then, you know, on the other hand, he's standing here saying that they're going to be farmers. So what's that contain of, taking all the trees out?
She just addressed that, she said she's not going to take all the trees out.
On the other hand, they're saying that they want to be farmers, in order to be a farmer, you got to cut the trees out. So you're opening up ground.
I mean, I understand your point, but they are allowed to do what they want to do with their property?
Technically, in a saying, we all have property, and we're not allowed to do what we have to do, because everything that we want to do, we have to come to the board to get permission to do.
Well, they're not-
If I wanted to build a garage, I got to come to you, if I want to build a shed, I got to come to you.
They're not asking to do anything with lot 10. There are lot 22 and 23, nothing to do with lot 10, there, that shouldn't even be a discussion here tonight.
That's a use, that's a use discussion, that's not a, a variance or a frontage.
They're here for a variance or a frontage. They're here for a frontage on Little Mill Road, for lot 22 and 23.
To gain access to the property to build a home, nothing about lot 10 or agriculture.
That's a whole nother issue, lot 10 clearing.
All right, we got all this ground, it's open for farming, farmers are selling every day. Why do we need to take more woods out and build more homes?
I understand that, but they're not here for that tonight, they're here for lot 10.
Oh, I'm just wasting my time then.
Anyone else like to be heard? I make a motion, we close the public for a motion by Dan DeCesare. Seconded. Second by Mike, our full in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, and extensions? Okay, gentlemen.
Okay, great question, this has nothing to do with the vote, but is this property back here owned by the Ciakos, is this off of Hollywood Lane down there? You guys might know. Do the Ciakos live near, close to your property back there?
Yes.
They grew up with Mike and his brothers, so just kind of racked my brain for that.
He was our neighbor and-
Yeah, yeah, could be.
Works with Hoffman.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for answering.
I just wanted to touch on the two engineering comments that we had, that was in step with the environmental commission's comments. It's our recommendation, based on the DEP mapping, that freshwater wetlands may be present on the property, and it's our recommendation that a letter of interpretation be obtained from NJDEP prior to development to confirm no presence of wetlands, and then a grading plan for the proposed dwelling, I think that's to that point, and associated improvements we require to be provided prior to an issuance of the building permit with the township. So, I just wanted to touch upon that, any comments?
No, that's-
So you're recommending a, a letter of interpretation and a grading plan again?
Yeah, the grading, the grading plan is separate, it's more of an informative comment on, on this, not necessarily requirement, it's completely separate from this, but the letter of interpretation we're recommending, and that's in line with-
I think the environmental commission also-
They recommend the same.
Recommend it as well.
If, if the board is considering addressing it tonight, I would just want to see a condition that we are clarifying that from the rear lot line of lot 24 on back, that they're eliminating Hollywood Lane, whatever it's called.
Whatever you need us to do, the deed and, the deed of correction will be done, absolutely.
That's what you indicated you were doing.
Absolutely.
Eliminating that.
Yes, sir.
So there's not going to be an easement or road access back to lot 10, it's just going to be-
Correct.
And I, no, maybe our engineering plan, I mean, normally, it's not good planning to grade a landlocked block, you'd normally combine them, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
We're only approving the road opening, correct?
The 100 feet.
The 100-foot road opening, that's all we're correct, that's all we're approving tonight, am I right or wrong?
Yes, but so that's the part of it.
When they go for a permit, they're going to have to address all this other stuff, am I right or wrong?
But I don't think it's a good idea to just ignore the, the Hollywood Lane and the two lots, they're saying they're going to combine them and eliminate that access and build a driveway elsewhere, and I think they have to submit a plan showing that eventually.
Yeah.
And the deeds of correction and so forth, I'm not adding anything, I'm just saying confirm what they said they were going to do.
They haven't even purchased property yet, right?
Correct.
No, we just need the frontage variance approval so that we can purchase the property on the 18th.
They might be back here again after they purchased the property to build the house.
Rather than not have to come back again, if they're already saying they're going to do the, the combination and the deed of correction, eliminating the lane, then let's do it now.
Well, I think to avoid, I mean, one way to avoid having a landlocked property is by all, combined all three lots, and then you don't have that issue. Is there a reason why all three lots aren't combined?
I suggested that earlier.
Because, right, because the purpose of this easement does appear to provide access to lot 10, so it's not landlocked.
When we do the deed of correction, we can put them all together, it's no problem.
Yeah.
But my, I guess my point is that if it's going to remain a separate lot, it's still going to need some sort of access.
We can deed them all together, it's no problem.
That's fine, that's no problem.
It's no problem.
It's fine.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
No, I think with that, we clarified what we wish we had seen in the beginning, but I think we got there.
Okay, gentlemen. I make a motion, we approve ZB 2203 with the understanding that all three lots will be combined. And a grade plan and a LOI.
And the elimination of the-
And the elimination of Hollywood Lane.
No problem, sure.
From what, that's lot 24?
Lot 24 and beyond, I believe.
Two lot 10, lot 24 to lot 10.
All right, motion by Dana DeCesare. Seconded. Second by Mike, our full. Yes.
Mr. DeCesare.
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum.
Yes.
Mr. Hamel.
Yes.
Mr. Glacius.
Yes.
Mr. Gravener.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
You know what you have to do, correct?
Yep.
Combine them, yep.
Yes, sir, thank everybody for their time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is NSB 22-04, the name of William Wester.
Yes.
Raise your hand, please, swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give.
I do, yes.
Name and address?
William Wester, 92 Triumph Road, Franklinville, New Jersey, 08322.
Okay, Mr. Wester, what exactly do you want to say?
I'm sorry?
What, what, what would you like to do?
I would like to do a 20 by 25-foot pole barn in my yard.
Do you ever have a garage on, on the-
I do not, no.
Is it a shed or a pole barn?
Pole barn.
Pole barn. Do we have a height on that as well?
The plans, I want to say it was 12, 11 or 12 foot?
It was 150.
12, yeah.
So explain to me why we're here with this?
I, I can't be, I was told I needed to be 50 feet from my property line, and I can't fit the garage in my yard anyway by doing that.
I think you see in the planning comments-
Yeah, okay, 15 feet in the rear yard.
If they have, if you have 500 square feet or more, so he's right at 500 square feet, but apparently there's a concrete pad that's a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
Which I guess triggered him having to do the variance, so that on page three of the planning comments explains it, or you can add it to the-
Julia is going to explain a little bit more detail in regards to how it's written in the ordinance.
So, it, it appears that the structure itself is 100 square feet, but the concrete pad is 792 square feet, I believe it's not clear in the ordinance what the floor area is with structure.
Would the floor area be considered in regards to the structure?
So, correct, correct, so if it's greater than 500 square feet, then it's required a 50-foot setback. At 500 square feet, it's a 15-foot setback.
It's because of the pad.
There's no definition, there's no definition of the floor area in the ordinance for what, what the structure should be.
So if you put it without the concrete pad, you'd be fine?
I believe so, yes.
Do you have a, something to put concrete up with? Is the pad already there?
No.
Oh, okay. Just pour the inside, you have the flood, that's why I decided to go back. Yeah, that's, that's a lot obvious with here now, that's over there. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the public.
We also have not been provided for the height of this structure either.
He just indicated it was 12.
It's 12, I have it.
A motion by Dana, tell them about the public. Seconded. Second by Andy Hamel, anybody here from the public like to be heard regarding this? Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the public for it.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Enters. I make a motion, we approve-
I second the motion.
DB 2204. Second by Dana, second by Andy Hamel.
Mr. Carafolo.
Yes.
Mr. DeCesare.
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum.
Yes.
Mr. Hamel.
Yes.
Mr. Glacius.
Yes.
Mr. Gravener.
Yes. Okay. The concrete pad? You're, you're good, you're approved.